I'm getting back into it. I'm here.
All right. Good evening, excuse me. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. Could we have roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
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 Present, we do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held back on September 20th. Does any have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve as submitted would be in order.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pesak. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an informal review of a request from the Alden Foundation for properties loaded, located at basically the corner of Rogers Road and Grand Avenue.
Sure.
Tracy.
Sure. The Alden Foundation is seeking feedback on a plan to construct a 41-unit affordable age-restricted housing facility on approximately 1.7 acres located at the southeast corner of Grand Avenue and Rogers Road. Subject property is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. The surrounding zoning districts and land uses are as follows. To the north, south, and west is R2 Single Family Residential, improved with single-family homes. And to the east is C2 Community Commercial, improved with the Grand Mill Shopping Plaza. The village's comprehensive land use plan, Compass 2040, reflects commercial for this property. To accommodate this use on the property, we would need to rezone the property to R6 Multi-Family Residential. The petitioner is here to walk the board through their plans and to get feedback on not only the proposed use, but any details on the site plan.
Thank you. Okay, um, is it, and you've heard this before, this is one of my favorite parts of our ordinance that we have the opportunity to kind of talk to people informally before a project is, comes in for a formal review. It gives us an opportunity to kind of think tank a little bit and give, give feedback. As you know, it's nothing that we say or do here tonight is going to be binding on this particular matter. So, but at this point in time, I'll turn the floor over to the representatives from Alden. If you can just please introduce yourselves and I'm just going to remind the members of the board that although it's informal, please wait for the chair to recognize before we just start talking. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Stivers. I'm the Executive Director of the Alden Foundation. And I'm joined by my colleague, Michael Bailey, who's the President of Alden Design Group. We really appreciate you taking the time for this informal review to discuss our vision for bringing affordable housing for seniors, a new community to Gurnee. I'd be lying to say that this isn't personal for me. I live in the nearby community. My kids go to daycare here in Gurnee. My wife works for Gurnee. And so, the idea of bringing affordable housing for seniors to Gurnee is near and dear to my heart. And we're excited to kind of walk you through what we envision for this specific project and how we think it's possible on this project parcel of land. So first, I want to tell you a little about the Alden Foundation. The Alden Foundation is a nonprofit affordable housing developer based here in the Chicagoland area. We are, been serving the Chicago suburbs for the last 25 years. Over that 25-year span, we have developed 15 communities throughout the suburbs. Our 15th community is going to be Edison Horizon, which will be breaking ground in 2024. And across those 15 communities, we have over 1,000 units of affordable housing for seniors in the Chicago suburbs. We are a developer who is uniquely and specifically focused on serving the senior population of 62-plus across our entire portfolio. We also benefit from the fact that we are a vertically integrated organization. So we have Alden Design Group, who does our architecture, design, and interior design. Alden Bennett Construction, who's our general contractor. Alden Realty Services, who does our property management. And so, we really try to work across all those different entities to ensure we are delivering a high-quality and engaging experience for the seniors living in our community. These are just some pictures of kind of what you can expect from a Alden property. We try to always integrate our properties into the fabric of the local community. And recognizing that each village is unique and different, we take that same approach in how we design. We also want to make sure that anytime anyone enters one of our properties, the last word you're going to use is affordable. You're going to think that you're walking into a premier community where there are lots of amenities available for our residents. And again, this is independent living for seniors. So these are seniors in the local community who are able to independently live and want a local community that they can engage with. Where they can have people who play in our game rooms with each other, who do book clubs with each other in our libraries, who exercise together in our exercise rooms. And so, these are some of the images that you can see from inside of our properties. So who is it that actually resides in our communities? So even though our communities are 62 and over to qualify, the average age of someone residing in our community is 77 years old. The people that we serve also are from the local community. So we deeply believe that people who have grown up, who have built their entire lives in Gurnee, should not, in their retirement, have to decide between staying in their local community and being able to afford their housing. The people that we see are coming from situations often where, unsimilar to my own personal history to my mother-in-law, who lives here in Gurnee, they've lost a partner potentially. Eighty percent of the people residing in our communities are individuals, so not couples. The average income of someone residing in our properties is $27,000. And they stay on average at least five years with 90% of our occupants, or 80% of our occupants being women. And so, that just provides you a snapshot of if you were to walk into any of the Alden Horizon communities, what you would see gathered when they're celebrating a birthday of their friend from down the hallway. These are the people that we serve in our communities, and these are the people we'd be serving by bringing a Gurnee Horizon to this local community. So what do we do? So, we believe in true partnership. That's why we love this informal process. Because we know there is no cookie-cutter way to build affordable housing in local communities. And so, we want to really be partners with the village and understand, what is your vision for the community? And how can we align what we do with that vision? We've been incredibly grateful for working with the village staff and team members to lead up to this point, to really get a feel for that, and then to bring it to this moment. And so, we are open and want your feedback around what this community looks like and how it operates. We build community. We know that for many seniors, and we learned this especially during COVID, the issue of isolation can be real. And so, we invest in making sure that these communities are places of engagement. As I mentioned, game rooms, and libraries, and exercise rooms, and activity counters. To really create an environment where people feel like they have a local community, where their friends are their neighbors and their neighbors are their friends. We are focused entirely on seniors. So as I mentioned, our portfolio is entirely for seniors 62-plus. And so, we really try to understand what the needs are of those we're serving and then adapt our models to accomplish that. We believe in excellence in design. We do not believe that because it is affordable housing, that it should be cheap. It should be value. No. We believe in building a premier, high-quality product. And we make significant financial investments to ensure that our residents feel as if they are living in something that they would be truly proud of to retire into. And we also partner with local agencies in your community to provide those supportive services. Because while our residents are living independently, we recognize that there are often local community organizations, village programs, et cetera, that seniors benefit from. And so, we try to make those connections where we can. These are some examples of our pictures of, again, community spaces about engagement. Whether it's game rooms with pool tables, whether it's movie theaters where people can have game nights or watch the big game together, or whether it's libraries and our book club. Again, you will also see here, there is not one of our communities that you're going to walk into, and it's going to look like the other. We pride ourselves on the fact that every community is different, and that difference comes from the relationship with the village to understand what the local needs are and build that. So in a second here, I'm going to hand it over to Michael. But this is our concept for Gurnee Horizon, which would be a 41-unit affordable housing community, independent living for seniors 62-plus of mixed-income levels. These units would be focused on serving people who are at 30, 50, and 60% of the area median income for Gurnee. So, the qualifications or eligibility for our communities is based purely on your annual income, not on your assets, your net worth, et cetera. So, to give you an idea, our latest numbers show that the average one-bedroom apartment right now in Gurnee is going for nearly $1,600. These apartments will be between, for a one-bedroom, will be between $625 to $1,200 at the highest end. And people making up to $42,000 of annual income would qualify for those 60% units here in Gurnee. Again, we've talked about the amenities, and we really are priding ourselves on building sustainable products that focus on the latest certifications around sustainability and green energy. But with that being said, I want to hand it to Michael to talk a little bit more specifically about our concept plan, as well as what we would need to be able to partner with the village to pursue this project going forward.
Good evening, everyone. One more, excuse me, one more quick thing to add to Stephen's presentation. We do actually have a full-time building manager that is in the building during office hours, five days a week, organizing activities, helping them set up for parties, and doing all those other ancillary things that they do. As well as a full-time in-house billing manager that resides in one of the apartments. The layout for this, no worries. The layout for this site is a, it's a very tight site. Our layout actually, for the most part, meets all the requirements of a, an R6 development, subject to a couple of the variances that we would have to ask for, one of which is parking. And we can go into the fact that our parking lots typically have always done one parking stall, excuse me, one parking stall per unit. And we typically only have 75% of our parking lots full at, at that, at one per unit, even for a two-bedroom. That would be a variance that we would be asking for. And we can show you the numbers for what works at all of our other facilities. The building is up against Grand Avenue. We are set back 25 feet from Grand Avenue. We meet the side yard setbacks for driveways. We meet the rear yard setbacks for the neighbor to the south. One of the comments was that we do have two driveway cuts into Rogers. We could eliminate the southern one. We've shown it now, just because it would make the traffic flow easier for the seniors instead of having to drive into that back parking lot and then having to come back out the same way. Just eliminating some confusion. However, that could be eliminated very easily. Another comment was the fire lane on the east side of the property. Typically, fire departments require a fire lane around the building, 360 degrees around the entire property. If you do not have that fire lane, there is no way for a fire truck to pull onto this property and then get out without backing out through the parking lot. We have in the past, up on Grand Avenue, it would be possible to put in a, the M6 curbs, or sorry, the M3 curbs, which is the mountable curbs. So you still have the, the look of a curb. However, the fire trucks can pull over it really easily. And then we can have grasscrete pavers, which is a subbase of rock, completely designed for fire truck weights and apparatuses. And then, but it looks like grass. It's mowed. That would enable the fire department to have access off of Grand Avenue without having a driveway look that people could be confused of them pulling into, because it would literally just be grass like the rest of the parkway. One of the other comments was for the, the traffic in and out of the neighborhood. We also understand that we also have done traffic studies to determine what the best way is, whether or not anything would have to be added, or whether the traffic would make this not a feasible project. Trying to go through the list of, of comments. The gazebo and the front patio. Right now, the gazebo, actually, you wouldn't even be able to see it if you were coming down Grand Avenue from the north because of all the trees and the shrubbery. So it actually lends itself right now to actually sort of not being seen. We know it's in the, the front and side yard setback, along with the patio in the front. We were trying to show how we could sort of make a buffer slash transition onto Grand Avenue. We've done this at other projects. We just did this in Warrenville, where we made the one side of the building look, for the lack of a better word, and don't, a little more commercial, just with some storefront, with some patio seating, some retaining wall to, to block foot traffic. So it looked like there was things happening outside when the residents would be out there. I know Grand Avenue is busy, but we would be open for discussing with you the viability of having a patio in that setback. We take our landscaping very seriously. We're required to put 2% of, of the funds into landscaping. We typically put more. We like our buildings to look just as good from the outside as they do from the inside. The generator location was a comment. It's supposed to be within five feet of the building. We are maybe 10 to 15 feet away, but what we do is we typically shield our generators with masonry walls at least six feet high. It would be a natural gas generator. So that would shield it. So I, it'd be a variance we would be asking for, but I don't think it's anything that would make someone not like it where it is. The monument sign, we would find the best location. I actually believe it would be more, better suited actually towards the front. So we would be able to, to move that around accordingly. There's, there's not any comments that have been made in the, in the pre-review that, that we can't meet and/or potentially come to an agreement that would make this project not move forward. I'm not sure if you've all, you've all seen this. I don't know if you have any questions on the layout, why we did what we did, or anything about the inside of the building, the construction.
You'd like to start? Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
No question about the mission. Okay, it's noble. And, you know, I think a community can always use more mixed and, you know, assets, you know, such as what you're proposing. It does appear to be high-quality. And, you know, I like the amenities, the architecture, and that sort of thing. I'm a little, initially, lukewarm on the location. Not the overall project, but where it is within the village. And, you know, I, I've been on this board for a while, and we've, we spent a lot of time and effort to update our comprehensive plan. And we use that, you know, we, we try to lean on that as much as possible. We put a lot of time and effort as a community and as a board and as village board, try to get to a point where we had this new guideline that we used as, you know, to, to lean on, you know, for such things. I mean, we're getting to be an older community now. We're, a lot of the things that we're looking at are more infill-type projects rather than large-scale, you know, comprehensive developments where we can tie a lot of things together. So, you know, I know in this particular case, you know, we're, we're R2 with a, with a C2 next to it, with a vision of having maybe a little bit more C2, you know, in this corner or at this major intersection. You know, so my initial knee-jerk reaction is not super excited about dropping R6 in the middle of it. Also recognizing at the same time that, you know, expanding commercial may also not end up being practical at the same time. So I'm not going to say that if it's not going to ever be C2, that, you know, I'm against it. So I'm a realist here. But, you know, again, I'm a little lukewarm, only from really a couple of standpoints. And one, I feel like there's a lot on the site. So the density standpoint seems kind of high to me. And I'm, and I'm concerned about the access. So we're, we're talking about, you know, a senior population that has to try to get access ultimately onto, on and off of Grand Avenue, whether going east or west. And frankly, I'm afraid for them. So I, I wouldn't be excited about pulling out of Rogers and going west on Grand myself. So I'm concerned about that. And so, just sharing that initial concern. And I'm not sure that I have, you know, an answer on how to resolve that, short of putting a stoplight there. But I would be much happier if I knew that it was a controlled access point for those individuals to have the ability to get out. So one of the questions I have is, you know, it is independent. They are independent to come and go as they please and lead their own lives. And how they do that is up to them. Some will have automobiles. Will you also be providing transportation for them as a service to take them to the grocery store and take them shopping and that sort of thing, so that they don't have to figure out how they're going to get on Grand Avenue and get about our community to shop and take care of all their needs?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So first of all, thank you so much for the feedback and the great question. So on the question specifically, we, so we do not provide transportation to our residents to local areas typically. Because again, we're trying to really reinforce that independent, right, versus the assisted or the memory care or the rehab. You know, on, you know, in full transparency on the site selection piece, you know, we've worked with the incredible team here at the village to discuss probably three or four sites. The challenge is, is that we have, the state places a lot of restrictions on exactly where you can build affordable housing nowadays. And so, you have to be within a mile of a grocery store. You have to be, there's a lot of different requirements. And so, as we thought about different opportunities, we did try to evaluate how we can come to Gurnee in a way that as close as possible, you know, meets the, the vision for the comprehensive land use. Unfortunately, we know that this is not that. But I, I do promise you, it was better than some of the alternatives. And so, we, we, you know, we try to do our very best to align those, but completely understand. We, we have, in some cases, we have found, and I can't guarantee this, it's up to parties that go beyond us. But we have found, for example, in our Huntley community, that Pace actually partnered with us and did a bus stop of their Pace buses at our facility. They agreed to incorporate that as part of their route. And so, that provided a different level of immediate access to public transportation that where we weren't as at Alden Foundation providing services. But it helped address some of the concerns around accessibility for our residents. And we are open to exploring any community partnerships we could find to help address that need.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, John. Josh?
I share some of the same concerns as Dave. Lukewarm because of the comprehensive land use and that it's, we're targeting commercial use for that, that specific piece of land. But, but not completely opposed to it. I actually kind of like the idea of having a denser residential area right next to a commercial use. I think it's a nice buffer. And this specific proposal, I think, might fit there, because you have the bank across, the credit union across the street. You have Gurnee Donuts and that, that whole, you know, commercial, you know, development to the east. I, I, it's, it's pretty dense when you look at the other residential areas just right surrounding it, right? And then, what's going to happen, you know, to the south, or to the north, or to the west? So I just, I just share some of those concerns, right? It's, it's, again, not in our comprehensive land use. And also, I, I, I just, I, I am concerned for the residents around, around that, that, this proposal, but not super opposed to it, because I think it is, it's, I, I, I'm just trying to think of the right words. But I think it's, it kind of has that urban feel, where you're, you're, you're getting a three-story denser development next to commercial. So that's what, what I would be a little bit more open to discussing and thinking through it.
Yep. Sorry, Michael stepped out. He has a family emergency that he's dealing with, so I apologize. But I, I appreciate that feedback. And I think, to your point, one of the reasons that we actually did like this site was proximity to that, proximity to the Walgreens, this kitty corner across the way, that there was some ability of, of walkability, you know, to some of the common needs. Obviously, no one, listen, I mean, my kids go to, like, went to Learning Express, like, right near there. Like, you know, I understand that walkability and Milwaukee and Grand aren't synonymous with one another. But, you know, trying to create at least proximity for them where we could, alternatively, versus their pharmacy and other things being further and further out.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Todd?
I, I agree with Josh and Dave. The, you know, also the concept of, your, your mission is spot-on. Anything to do for the seniors. My subdivision, we probably have 80% is elderly, so I understand that. With the parking, I'm concerned with that, that you might not have enough, especially at holiday time, when people come to visit their parents and stuff like that. So, you know, where is people going to park for that? You know, I really am concerned about coming into the, to the facility. Would we end up having to make it, you know, you can only make a right-hand turn into on Rogers and then a right turn going out on Grand Avenue, which limits the ability to get in and out sometimes. But, you know, I, I'm not completely opposed, but those things really concern me more about safety and things of that nature.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your feedback.
Agree with the mission. Thank you for thinking about our older population, so that, thank you, and the means and, and the age. My concern is the street, Rogers Street. I drove there this afternoon, and I was trying to turn around, and it's really hard. It's a very narrow street. So, you know, trying to traffic, there was a truck, a moving truck in there, and there was another one on the other side, and he couldn't pass that. So that is one consideration. You know, that is concerning. I know you looked at other places, and this may be the best one, but I'm really concerned about that. You know, ambulance is getting in, you know, you mentioned fire trucks, but, you know, at, at that age, I know that ambulances are, are frequent for that age population.
No, absolutely. We, we completely understand. Appreciate the feedback.
I would like to respond just to the ambulance. This is not a nursing home.
Right.
This is not assisted living. So the, there are not as many ambulance calls as you may think that there is. They do have emergency calls in their, in their bedroom and in their bathrooms. However, there are not a lot of emergency calls for ambulances. Same thing with the fire trucks. We're provided to, to provide all of these things, but thankfully, we don't have to utilize them as much as you would think. That, again, this is not a nursing home. I, I will tell you that access off of Grand Avenue with the setbacks required in the grand, the comprehensive plan would make this project not viable. The setback requirements for the rear yard, the side yard, and Rogers, if we had to have an entrance off of Grand Avenue, this project wouldn't work. We've, we've tried. You can ask Tracy. We've gone through many iterations of trying to come off of Grand Avenue, thinking, okay, maybe it's a right in and a right out. It, it just doesn't viably work for a project of the size necessary to make it financially viable to build. And, and I know that one of the comments also is to, was to have a sidewalk on Rogers. I don't know if, 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 if there is a, a plan to put curbs and gutters in. I don't know if that's would be part of the requirement for our development, which I don't, potentially could make Rogers wider, at least where our building is going, which would help eliminate some of those traffic issues that you ran into. Because yes, I drove it too, and it is a narrower street. And the, though it's a, you, you pull off on the gravel, I think it there looked like there was a six-inch drop-off before you got into the gravel. So I, I agree with you. And that's something that we can address to, to potentially make better. And that's why we're here.
Yeah, you mentioned that there was a traffic study done. Was that provided to staff?
Sorry, the staff recommends a traffic study.
Okay.
That's, that was in the recommendations.
No, yeah, I saw that recommendation. I thought, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you said you did a traffic study.
We have not.
Okay.
We have not. We have done it for other communities where it's been required, but we have not for this one yet.
Okay. And then, I guess my, I share the concerns, because it is dense. It's, it's difficult. How do we get? Okay. And then I guess my, I share the concerns because it is dense. It's, it's difficult. How do we get beyond, past the, the requirement for parking, right? We're cutting it not just by a hair, but by a lot. And I understand what you're saying. And you can provide evidence to staff of probably all of your other facilities of what the average tenure is. I think you said 75% at the max is, is what you're looking at for.
Every other community we have right now is at a one-to-one ratio and they, no community supersedes 75% at any point in time.
Yeah. I think, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to the concept. I think I'd have to noodle it over a lot more. I did read through this since we had it last week and tried to wrap my head around Rogers. And I drove Rogers, as probably everyone here has, a couple of different times. Sometimes it was easy to get out on Grand and you can make a left turn. Other times it was impossible. You know, I have, I have locations that's down the street from that and I know it can be tenuous at times. I, I just wonder about it. And I know you looked at other sites and I just see this one as being, it is going to be starkly different than your neighbors and the balance of that neighborhood, right? I mean, it's, it's going to be something completely different than what's there right now. And I'm just wondering if that shifts the balance for your neighbors in terms of what they've been accustomed to. Not that a commercial development wouldn't, right, as a C2.
Yep.
It's just what does this look like? And I'd have to kind of think about that a little bit more. I'm not wholly opposed to it. And I'm glad you made that distinction because that was going to be one of my questions. Like, what's the difference? This is independent living, but you, you mentioned that you have a lot of amenities that are maybe somewhat similar or dissimilar to a nursing home. You're not, you don't have beds, you don't have nurses, there's aides and all of that. That's 100% independent living, but you do have someone there that's organizing, if you will.
Yeah, full, full-time property manager and a live-in maintenance manager, so that.
So that's two units off, two units, two units immediately, right?
So one of the units is for the maintenance manager. The property manager doesn't live on the site. The, the maintenance manager does for that thing that happens at 2:00 AM. The maintenance manager is there. The property manager is a dedicated 40-hour-a-week team member, though, of our, of our organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we, and we appreciate the feedback. And I think that, you know, if I'm everywhere, every community that we go into, unfortunately, you know, we typically are going to have to talk to neighbors about being up close, right? One of the other downsides is that from, when it comes to developing affordable housing in the state of Illinois, being up against other affordable housing makes it, is actually very difficult from the actual state to award you the actual funding to support your work. And so they don't, the, at the state level, they don't want to see, they want to see you in neighborhood, you know, closer neighborhoods. They don't want to see you next to other multifamily. And so it's a, it's a, it's a delicate dance we have to dance often between the village needs and the, and the state's desires.
Yeah. Tracy, sorry, Chair, one question. Tracy, it was mentioned that there could possibly be a requirement for a dedicated left turn on Rogers. What would that entail and what would that look like for the balance of Rogers heading south?
They would probably work within the existing right-of-way. There's existing right-of-way, you know, that isn't improved. So they could probably just go into that right-of-way for the turn lane and then it would transition south.
Thanks.
I'll start out with saying, I'm pretty familiar with the Alden Group as, as a total family. My mother was an early resident at one of the facilities in Shorewood. Her account number only had two digits. And everything you say about quality construction, look and feel is, is spot on. I mean, it's, it's, it's very, very impressive. I share concerns, though, with, with the other board members in terms of the parking. If, if your experience is where you have one-to-one situations and you're only using 75%, the 40 units, 40 odd units or spaces on site are, are kind of there. But I'm still a little concerned about just, just the access and egress of Rogers, I mean, is, is a very rural feeling street. And the alternative to get away from there or south, south road isn't, isn't much better in terms of, you know, coming up with creative ways to, to, to get onto Milwaukee or to get onto Grand. And it is a fair distance from the, the major commercial district. I mean, granted, we have ACEs, we have the credit union, we have donuts, we have a couple of restaurants. But the grocery store, I, I can't think of one that's within a mile.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a, we were talking with Tracy about this. It's a weird setup the state does. So they, anything that's even like full-service market counts as a grocery store. And so there are markets that are on Milwaukee right across from Grand Avenue on the, or, or, sorry, Milwaukee right across from Great America's entrance, right over by the Learning Express and Stevens, et cetera, that technically qualify for the market, the market requirement. Again, we want to be as close as we can to real grocery stores, but even getting within one mile, I mean, Tracy and the team and I pulled up maps, I mean, really looking at sites to try to figure out how to meet that requirement. And it is very tough, but that's, so we're using that as one of the, meets the requirements for that based off that property.
Okay. I, I know all about technicalities, but in my mind, the practicality is, is, is a bigger issue. And here we have, you know, average age in their 70s trying to manipulate getting from Rogers or, 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 or south onto either Grand or Milwaukee and, you know, getting to a grocery store or whatever. It, it seems kind of tenuous to me. Actually, I'd feel much more excited about it if it was an assisted living facility as opposed to an independent living because a lot of that dynamic goes away in, in that scenario. In regards to density and everything, I can kind of see it being a transitional use between residential and, and the commercial district. So I, I think I can rationalize my way to, to the density on the site. But my, my biggest concern is I'm going to need more convincing that the traffic logistics are, are going to be safe and viable. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay. So I, I guess to summarize, you're getting kind of lukewarm here. But I think we've given you a lot of input in terms of, you know, what needs to be addressed if you want to go to the next step.
Yeah, so I mean, first of all, this, this feedback is invaluable. I think obviously, from what I'm hearing, one of the biggest challenges, obviously, is the, is the traffic piece and et cetera. One of the things that we would look for guidance and maybe we can talk to staff after the meeting. But as to what would, what would meet that, where, where we could maybe turn up the dial from, you know, lukewarm higher? Would it be a traffic study, as was mentioned, or other things? Because obviously, you know, there's, there's limitations to what we can do as far as the location goes. But we would want to make sure that we could convey in as many ways as possible that people felt comfortable that the traffic and the, the work or the track of flow is not going to be a challenge.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a parking modification request from the Waggoner Behavioral, Behavioral Health proposed to be located at 5631 Manchester. Tracy?
Autrin.
Autrin?
Yes. So Waggoner Behavioral Health requests a parking modification to allow parking below the code requirement for a medical office building on the property located at 5631 Manchester Drive. The code requires 17 parking stalls based on the facility's size and use. If the use were a regular office instead of a medical office, the parking requirement would have been for 13 spaces. The site currently has nine stalls, including two accessible stalls and a drop-off or pickup lane. As the site only needs one accessible stall, the PCB may wish to add a condition that the second stall be divided into two standard stalls to increase the number of spaces to 10 total. The petitioner claims the existing parking spaces will exceed the business parking demand. Their operations include outpatient treatment sessions for children and adolescents diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. Business hours will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Five employees and four clients will be at the facility at any time. Treatments would be provided by appointment only and take three to eight hours for approximately three to six months of period. Clients would be dropped off and picked up using the existing drop-off lane and no one would accompany clients during the treatment sessions. There is an ability to construct up to seven additional parking stalls along the west side of the building, which would require the removal of some existing improvements such as fencing and patio. The applicant is willing to land bank these stalls and construct them if the parking, if a parking problem arises. The PCB may wish to add this as another condition of approval as well. The petitioner is also open to, to other parking solutions if required or needed in future, such as obtaining adjacent lots agreements to share parking or coordinating valet service or encouraging an employee carpool program. The petitioner is in, is in attendance and they will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great. If whoever's here from the petitioner could please come to the microphone, please state your name and.
My name is Kelly Waggoner and I am the owner and clinical director for Waggoner Behavioral Health.
Could you describe for us just a little more in terms of the dynamic, in terms of why you believe the existing parking will be sufficient?
Sure. So the organization has.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. So the, okay, perfect. The organization currently has just a few employees. So five employees will be in the office during the day and four treatment sessions at one time. The learners are dropped off for their treatment sessions, so parking isn't required for the learners. Their parents will drop them off and then leave the parking lot immediately. If they are required to stay, those are scheduled in advance and they'll be scheduled during less busy times so that their parking is available.
Okay. And in terms of drop-off, are, are the parents parking and then escorting their child in? Or are you meeting them underneath the canopy?
We'll use the drop-off lane and then an RBT or registered behavior technician will meet the learner at the car. So parents would not park and then walk their learners into the building.
Questions from members of the board. As a reminder, this is strictly a parking issue. It's not a, a use issue. So we'd like to start.
Oh, I can start.
Sure.
How long have you been there? And are you in the facility now or no?
We are not.
You're not? Okay. So one thing is typically when, when I'm, when I'm hearing that, you know, we're only five employees now, I always like to project in the future, you're in the business. Hopefully, the business grows. When the business grows and you have more employees, how would you accommodate that?
Sure. So in the industry, it does take a little bit of time to get clients set up for treatment. Sometimes they require a diagnosis from another clinician and that takes quite a bit of time. So we have a lot of understanding of when this problem would, would arise. If we, if we grow, then we would start to use some of those alternative solutions such as encouraging employee carpooling or valet from another parking lot or partner with a neighboring parking lot so that we're able to establish whatever relationship that's necessary so that our employees can park there. And the same sort of drop-off situation with the learners would, would, it would be the same. So parents would not park and then walk their child in. Instead, it would just serve as a drop-off.
Thanks.
Dave?
I'm very much in favor of establishing the agreement for the land because I think this could accommodate that potential growth. You know, again, it looks as though if we, if we split that handicap spot into two, there is four spaces for clients' needs. There's five spaces immediately in front, which I assume would be available for. So, you know, it looks like for the immediate, you know, needs, there's going to be an adequate amount. But I am very comfortable with making sure that, you know, those seven are land banked and there's an agreement that that would be accessed and utilized of this, you know, potential expansion. And I hope that happens for, if your business flourishes.
Sure. With, I do have a question about land banking. If that's okay?
Sure.
So what would the requirements or what would that look like in terms of the growth? And if it's necessary, what would be the requirements for the organization?
So usually if, if the planning and zoning board attaches this as a condition, if the village gets noticed that there's cars parking in other areas, like the commercial center, immediately to the east or parking on street or in other areas in the neighborhood that they're not supposed to be and they're associated with this business, then we would notice you that, you know, you have to build out those land bank parking spaces typically. We would look at the degree of, you know, how much parking is spilling off, out onto other parcels or onto the street and just have you, you know, install what is needed. If it's, you know, easier, more economical for you or the property owner to build them all at once, that's perfectly fine also. But generally, there's a notice from us that we, we are getting comments that there's a parking problem. We notice you and then you have time to build them out.
Okay. Tracy, I just have a follow-up question on that. The, the way that the lines are on Manchester, it doesn't look like on-street parking is permitted, but I didn't pay attention to signage.
I don't think on-street parking is allowed on Manchester. Is it? It is?
It's permitted.
Oh, well, then they have the ability to legally spill over onto the street.
It just looked like the, the white line was, was, it's narrower than a car.
I was going to look into that, but I'm like, we don't allow parking on that major road. I was wrong.
Okay. But parking is permitted on the street there.
Well, so that builds in a little extra buffer for them because they can use a little bit of on-street parking too.
Okay, thanks. Josh?
Hi, thank you for presenting today. Generally in, in, in favor of the proposal because it sounds like it's going to take time to ramp and it sounds like if all goes perfectly, you'll have the perfect amount of spaces. Do share some of the concerns about the overspill and would be in favor of the land banking condition. I think that's a great idea. But I did have one question. Where would you build those spots? Is it the, I'm looking at this picture here. Is it those in the red, the ADA spots where you, they would, Tracy, where would they build the spots?
Do you see the site plan? Wait.
Proposed addition.
Let me put this up. Oh.
I'm sorry, Tracy, if I missed this.
That's okay. So this proposed addition area right here?
Yes.
Along this entire length of this building, they have enough room to extend basically this drive aisle and put head and park, just basically continue the head and parking as it exists here.
Okay.
Okay.
So this was offered up as a solution to comply with our ordinances?
It was offered up as a possibility should the PCB be concerned about the level of parking here. As I, we did point out in the notes, we have in our code different levels of parking for different types of offices. So for government offices and medical offices, that requires more parking than just a regular non-medical or non-government office. One of the things that staff has been talking about is just with the way office developments are going now with hybrid remote work from home, do we really need the, the additional amount of parking that we require for government office or medical office? So we were probably going to look into that at some point in the future. And if we find other communities, that might support a lower parking amount for government and medical office. We might bring those down a little bit to maybe closer to the regular office level.
Which in this case, it would go from 17 to the 13?
Correct.
And we're saying there's four.
And we're saying there's four, we're at nine, where there's four missing, there's a gap of four?
There's currently nine, if you split the handicap into two legal spaces, you would be at ten. They have the ability easily to get another seven spaces to the west of the building, up to seventeen.
Okay, and that's not part of your plan to go there right now? Okay, so you, that's why you're coming to us? Okay.
But even, even if, if we made the motion right, and I, I'm fine with the landbank, but they, you probably wouldn't run into an issue if there is on-street parking that's allowed on Manchester.
I mean, it...
I mean, you run to it from a code perspective, yes, but...
From a practical point of view, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
From a, a technical enforcement of the code, there's still that onsite...
That onsite, right, right, yeah. But I'm saying for the...
There's a difference between being pragmatic, which I like to be, versus being real technical, which we also have to be.
Right.
Okay.
I'm trying to give them some assurance that...
Yeah, so I think the, the, the failsafe is, if you will, is the landbank concept, knowing that they can park on the street gives us the flexibility to be creative with it. Okay? If that makes sense, okay?
Jim, thank you, thank you so much.
Leah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, okay. We have decision-making capability on this one. As we go to motion, I, I would suggest that we incorporate in the motion that it's, the exception is specifically related to the business that is being proposed to us. It doesn't go with the property, it goes specifically with, with the practice that's going to be inside the building. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Dave.
I move that we approve the request by Waggoner Behavioral Health for a parking modification to allow parking for their medical office practice in the building and property located at Manchester Drive, subject to the conversion of one of the, into the two standard parking stalls in the construction of up to seven landbanked parking stalls along the west side of the building. Parking issues in the future.
Any, do we have a, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions about the motion?
Is that motion also including the exception for the business specifically?
We don't have to, because it's, it's, it's permitted within zoning.
Okay.
The only thing before is, is the parking exception.
Okay.
Okay, but great question. Joanne, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Nortop?
Aye.
Kaydaj?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Benzula?
Aye, motion carries. Good luck with your project. Next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for October eighteenth. Do we have anything anticipated?
We have an informal and we might have a minor sign exception.
Okay, so planned to be here then. I'll open the floor to the public for comment, for anything that wasn't on the agenda. Close the floor. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Move by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Nortop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Got a boogie, got a boogie.